All right. Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Work Session. It's September 4th, 2024. It's 9:35 a.m. We kicked off at 9 a.m. with a new employee orientation that is not livestreamed, but we're starting our livestream portion of the meeting. We have several topics to cover. We're here till noon if needed. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Emily Claus, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. And we have staff that will introduce themselves, public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County Tube Channel throughout the duration of this work session. So with that, I'll look into the county manager. It looks like our first topic is rural wastewater solutions. You see Ashley Rice here, our interim Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. Does it go straight to Ashley?
Before the team takes off, just want to thank them for being proactive and coming up with this topic before we've done. We just had new employee orientation. We were talking about that forward-leaning stance. And I believe this is one of the great examples of a team doing that. So Ashley and team, I'll hand over to you to introduce yourselves and get us underway.
Well, Ashley Rice, interim CPED Director, and I'm really excited to be joined here by awesome folks from Environmental Health.
Good morning. Dawn Peebles, Environmental Health Program Manager.
Good morning. This is Dawn, Environmental Health Division Director.
So we are all happy to be here. This is an exciting opportunity that the county has to help support our rural South County communities. First, we're going to touch on some of the challenges our community faces, our South County communities face relating to wastewater treatment. And then we'll provide some historical context and walk through a potential solution that we'd like to further explore with your direction. So I just have to point out this picture and like the amount of community spirit here at the Rainier Day Parade two weekends ago, totally raining, and everyone was still having a great time and eating all the candy they were throwing on the street.
Beautiful turnout.
It was really, it was really fun. But some of the challenges that these communities face, you see these really neat old buildings in this, you know, little downtown feel. They are limited by the lack of wastewater treatment. They don't have a, you know, a centralized wastewater treatment plant. The businesses and homes here in Rainier are on septic systems as well as the businesses you see along Rochester Main Street and the homes around there. And of course, some of the challenges, you know, from having a community of this size on septic are potential groundwater contamination and those nitrates getting into people's wells and whatnot. Other challenges presented when you only have septic as your wastewater treatment option is you have fewer housing and business choices. So when a business comes in and wants to get a permit to go in one of those buildings, it's a very limited number of businesses that can make a septic system work in the kind of footprint that these businesses have for a land area. And then, of course, it's really expensive to put in a centralized wastewater treatment plant, especially in a community of this size. How do you make it pencil in the long term? So with all that as background, CPED and Environmental Health sat down and tried to brainstorm some alternative solutions that might work for these communities, both to address any potential groundwater contamination concerns as well as try to spark some economic development and diversified housing options for these communities. And what we came up with, this isn't a, this isn't a new wastewater treatment solution. It's the way it may be used that is new. So a large onsite sewage system, any kind of prisons or schools or educational institutions and whatnot that you see out in rural communities, they're going to be on one of these systems. So it's still septic, but it's like septic plus. And I don't want to go beyond that. Dawn can answer questions about what they look like. But essentially what it is, is a lower-cost alternative to a centralized treatment plant. They do have capacity to serve up to 370 housing units, or in this case, like a small business district. They are authorized under the Growth Management Act, and that's important because when you think of a community like Rochester, it is not an urban growth area. Even if they did want to put in a centralized waste, or the county wanted to put in a centralized wastewater treatment plant there, they wouldn't be able to. They're permitted by the state rather than the county, so we would have to partner with them. But we've already reached out and they're open to working with us on this idea.
Permitted by the state?
Permitted by the state.
Which agency?
The State Department of Health. And big difference with this, even if you put in a private system, it needs to be a backstop. And that would be city, county, like City of Rainier, county, or utility district.
What do you mean by backstop?
If it privately owned.
If it fails or something goes wrong, making sure there's somebody that has the expertise that can go in and take over. I will say, and I touched on what they've traditionally been used for. The big shift and the idea that we had that we called Department of Health with was, okay, so they've been used for these large educational institutions, prisons and things like that. Can you use them for a business district? Can you go in and retroactively put one of these in to support economic development, housing development in a community like Rainier and Rochester? We didn't know the answer we would get. We were really happy to hear that they had, Department of Health had just piloted two other projects somewhat similar to this in the Central Puget Sound region of the state. And they're excited to pilot more. They are interested in working with us on developing concepts.
Where were those two pilots? Do you recall exactly where they were? I know one was north in King County potentially, or Pierce County.
Yeah.
You Google it. It's already.
And those are projects like UGAs. UGAs in the Central Puget Sound are much bigger than ours. And they're not necessarily like historical or historic communities or town centers. But I think one was an apartment complex with other associated uses. And what they said is that they have figured out a way to make them modular. So imagine you're putting in a septic system and you're sizing it to make sure it can provide the necessary treatment for that educational institution. And now they can make them modular where you don't necessarily know exactly what is going to be built, but it can, they can build the system to accommodate different, different growths that may occur. So it sounds like technology has shifted that might make this a potential solution for communities like Rainier and Rochester. And speaking of Rainier, I'm going to turn this over to Dawn because as it relates to Rainier, there's quite a bit of history as to why, why the county would be partnering with Rainier rather than just having Rainier pursue this on their own.
Well, we have, Environmental Health permits all septic systems, individual and community systems within the county, including City of Rainier. And there's two key pieces that may pose limitations on development. And that is the required minimum lot size and then the impacts of the nitrate loading from the wastewater itself. And so based on the county's data and modeling, there were concerns about long-term cumulative effects of nitrates in Rainier and the impacts to the drinking water. And so we were looking for solutions, short-term and long-term. And so met with county, county and city officials to discuss those options. And so, short-term, we looked at collecting additional data. We also created a review process that would allow applicants to do a feasibility study before they invested additional resources in a project. And then looking at the long-term options, that's where we engaged the state. And after talking with them, recognizing loss may be the solution to provide that economic development in downtown Rainier and allow multifamily development and additional housing options there as well. And loss systems do address those two key factors because although minimum land area is still required, it's not specific to an individual lot. So that eliminates that barrier. And then also, excuse me, they do have, many loss systems have advanced treatment that address nitrate loading if it is a concern.
Can we ask questions?
Cut your pin real quick. I want to just go back to what the county manager started with. This is our, our team being proactive. So we knew that growth was limited in Rainier, and we knew that there was nitrate loading. So drinking water is going to potentially be bad. This team said, let's find a way to help the community. They reached out to the state. They got approval to do this process. They're coming to you to say, we want to keep helping the community. We need you guys to understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. And this is, I just think, what an awesome example of being proactive in service to our community. You were asked to do this, so it's appreciated. Please.
Yeah, I think I would take it one step further. We'd want your direction so staff don't go off and work on something. And then there's a decision point that we have to bring back later and there not be directions. So that's why my desire to bring this to you. If the staff have done a great job of identifying some potential solutions, but the word potential is key, and they would have to do some more research and work as they get through. And you can ask all the questions you need. But at the end of the presentation, we're going to look for a thumbs up or thumbs down as to do you want them to continue to explore this? So that then what would follow would most likely be decision points, some of which could be board items that would come before you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is very exciting. I'm very excited, but I have like all these questions percolating in my head in regards, you know, I've, I've never heard of this. So like how much capacity, like what, how many people can this serve? Or are there different models where, you know, you can kind of modify it depending on how many you estimate serving?
So a large onsite sewage system typically has wastewater flows starting at 3,500 up to 100,000 gallons per day. So significant flows and can incorporate, as Ashley mentioned, a variety of either residential or commercial uses and designed for future uses, right? So that comes into the planning and feasibility of what does the growth look like? What activities and uses need to be incorporated? And then, you know, planning ahead for that, for those flows and wastewater stream.
Did you say one loss could serve up to 370 housing units?
Yeah, and this is great timing because we're all doing our comprehensive planning. And then the Rainier Joint Plan is going to be kicking off late 2025, 2026. And so in terms of mapping out, what does Rainier want to look like? And then being able to support it with, you know, an infrastructure component is, yeah. Couldn't be better timing, at least for a parallel exploration of that.
Oh, sorry. Just one more. I guess I'm, I'm wondering, right, like when I'm, I think of a septic system, right? I think of the one I have, right? The draining and all of that. How does something like this work? Do you just have to have like a mega drain field? Like what is, what does this look like?
Yes. I mean, I think there is a much larger land area, so that's what we're looking at. Okay, that's part of our research if we do move forward and say, where could this go? How can it be supported? Because it does have to be in close proximity to the, the structures and uses it serving.
Yeah, and one of the, on the slide up there, you'll see one of the parcels outlined in red. That is county-owned. That's the Rainier-Tonino Trail. It's just one idea that we had, that we explored with the state. If, you know, is the proximity of that parcel close enough? Because the trail is just one little narrow piece of it, and then there's the land on either side. But with the gradients in the location of that lot, the state said that that would definitely be one that, you know, could be considered, and that might be part of partnership. No obligation, but if, you know, there is, is a way that the county could partner.
One more, and then I promise I'm done.
No, you're not.
I'm wondering in terms of the hookups, right? I know that for sewer, right, you have to like pay for the infrastructure to go to your house or to your establishment. So how would something like this work in order for a specific area to connect to this? And, you know, what kind of, I understand we're looking for, you know, grant funding and different partnerships in this, but would that fall on the owner? Or is that something that we're going to be looking for grant funding and, and assistance?
Probably to be determined.
To be determined.
Probably going to be part of the feasibility study.
Okay.
And see how it pencils out.
Thank you.
So I'll go with a couple. I see Commissioner Edwards. The, going back to your saying, you were saying like there's two issues, something about minimum lot size. I don't understand. Can you go back to lot size, how that plays into all of this?
Yes. So currently, four septic system applications that come in to the county for our review, they're reviewed for state local codes and policies. But two of the factors that have limited some projects in Rainier are regarding the minimum land area that's required to support that septic system. So the lot itself has to be a certain size.
So like this is your lot, and you've got to have a septic system this big? You can only have a business this big?
Yeah, and they're really.
But if your, if your loss system's over here, then you can have a building this big and plug into that?
You got it.
So.
Considering how small the lots are, there's no room for anything. You could have a, nothing.
The minimum lot size needed to accommodate a traditional septic, is that what you're saying? And that's not always. And then the other factor you're saying had to do with nitrate loading?
Correct. Yes.
And you say county data has raised concerns, and is this new data?
It's data that I'm aware of the last several years.
It's the cumulative effect, though. I think that's important.
Yeah, I think the concern is surrounding the cumulative effect. Thank you.
So we don't have a problem right now, but your team is looking ahead of the curve here?
I'm looking at Commissioner Edwards, and he's next on the list. But in our many, many spirited debates about septic, you've argued that the only ones really causing problems are the marine, the older marine ones that fail. And in the inner South County where there's no, you, you were very aggressive in attacking the data that suggested that there was water quality threats to groundwater. So I'm curious what your reaction is to hearing some of that news.
Well, I guess even here, there is a federal level on nitrates, parts per million. There's a state level, and then the county's got their own level, which is a lesser amount allowed, if you're going to refer to nitrates, than either the state or the feds. So could you kind of touch on that a little bit? That, I mean, and I, I think we, we want to make sure that we're being reasonable, but at the same time protecting, you know, the groundwater. So I, I know there's, there's speculation, and then there's facts. So.
But regardless, you're not allowed to develop, the way, the way the current system is set up, you're not going to develop in Rainier. Any commercial businesses aren't going to.
That's debatable.
Well, it's not easily. It doesn't pencil out. But if we were to come up with a wastewater, you know, and Rainier's, Rainier's faced with the, the issue of not being able to afford a wastewater treatment plant, and this is, this is an exciting opportunity.
I'm hoping this is a solution, but to answer Ty's question, what are those differences and explain those differences?
Do you have, let me just, do you have that information ready at your disposal? Or do we need a research center to get back to the commission?
I can share what our current policy is on how we interpret that nitrate loading, if that would be helpful. So the current policy is a formula in the way we interpret the hydrogeological report to say, will this project and the amount of wastewater nitrates that will be generated, will it increase a certain amount and plug it into that formula? If it increases by 10%, then it's deemed unacceptable. So I think that may be what you're referring to as far as current policy.
Well, even that is speculation. The science behind it depends a lot on the soil, nearby wells, how, how far away from the drainage, like I'll just use the Schuets River as an example. It's about a mile from Rainier, I think, or maybe, maybe two. To make sure that we have adequate treatment and size of drain fields to make it all work. Now, I'm all, I'm very interested in proceeding. But when you talk about the cost versus the outcome of what the product is, are you going to go by federal, state, or local? And local has always been much more restrictive. And I don't know how that fits into the plan.
The 10, 4, and 2, I think, is that, like, state, federal level's 10, and then state's 4, then the county at 2 will like, as I understood it, would like flag it because it would be like, okay, if it's 2, then it's getting close to 4. And that's, we can't be there by state level, so we, we take action, even though it's not a violation at 2.
This, this is a holdover from years ago. And even, I mean, it was a philosophy, how can we stop growth in Thurston County? And that's kind of what it's been. And that's why we have a lower threshold. But, you know, to Wayne's comments about that you can't have a septic, even if you have a small lot, if we can make for provisions for an adequate drain field and maybe multi-folks hulking up, I'm kind of curious, is this, like using the 370 threshold as an example, is, is that going to be a system that is going to service those that are already there? And then there's only allowance for 42 more that would be new? Are we going to allow the old systems that are in place to continue to function? And we're going to put a system in place that could handle 370? And I, I don't know how the 370 comes out because if you doubled the size of the facility and drain field and all that, theoretically, you could have more. I don't know the answer to that.
I think those are good questions. Yeah, they're great questions for the feasibility analysis at this point.
Oh, yeah, I want this to be looked into for sure.
Yeah, we haven't engaged with the City of Rainier yet. We wanted to wait for board's direction, and so those are all things that we need to explore with the city.
Josh?
And just for conversational purposes, nitrate loading as a scientific term, what is nitrate loading in layman's terms?
So the wastewater generated from a septic system contains nitrates. And as the wastewater's flowing through the soil, right, the pathogens are being treated and nitrates dependent on the site conditions, the soil types, vegetation, it's very dependent on the site conditions, may be minimized, right? But there's still some level of nitrates there.
Does that mean poop in the water?
Well, I mean, nitrates are a result of human waste. Yes.
We just got to be very clear on what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's all other.
Right. Animal waste.
And lawn fertilizer. Fertilizer is a big piece of it.
So how much do you want? That's what we're talking about. And we have a potential solution to explore, the feasibility, to reduce that in this community.
My other question was about, so you showed me this, this parcel, and maybe this is appropriate for this larger-sized drain field. But like, and this goes back to Commissioner Mejia's question about the structure of these. I still am a little confused, like, you know, we don't want a bunch of development on our trail, obviously. So how does that help development on the other side of Rainier? Or where, or where there's actually property owners that want to do a development? I mean, how do they, how does it fit? I mean, can you just stick the drain field anywhere and pipe to it? I, I don't know how these things are built and how they fit like a larger community like Rainier.
I think there's going to be a lot of factors that have to go into that feasibility, sort of drawing a line around, here's the ideal area where, in this case, you know, we kind of took a snapshot of the area that allows the, the most diverse housing types as well as the business district. And so if you want to think about an area to serve with an alternative wastewater treatment solution, this is probably an area. It's not going to solve all of the problems, though. There might be something on the edge of Rainier where they would have to do their own loss system, you know, if it's a larger multifamily development.
So what lots on this little map you're showing me could be served by that outlined parcel?
We wouldn't know exactly without doing a feasibility analysis. This was just a.
But there are these kind of systems out there. And how, so i- i- in the, in places where these systems are working, like you said, a prison or a educational, like how, what's their, what's their capacity for area to be served?
You're, the question I think you're asking, Chair, is what's the run? Like, how far out could that parcel provide service? And what I'm hearing the staff say is they'd have to do a feasibility study.
But we know some examples based on how they're used now.
You run pipe as far as you want, but then it comes down to, is it worth the cost of like how much it puts in and, you know, who's paying for it?
Have that information?
Well, I mean, just conceptually, the reason it's up here is because we believe it might work, but we don't know yet.
Well, and it sounds like we do have at least a rough estimate of the distance.
The state did clarify that the drain field has to be within a half a mile of what it's serving.
Okay, well, there you go. That's a parameter.
Thank you.
But then you do have to consider things like running pipe.
And when they came up with the half mile, how did they happen to come up with the half mile? Is there anything more to the slideshow?
Yes. There you go. Rochester.
I'm not, I'm not ready to leave Rainier yet. Get out of the weeds. Get out of the weeds.
Okay, I think the.
We'll drive west in a second.
The issue is, and this is where I'm giving you direction. I don't want you to answer any questions that you don't have the answers for if we have to research it. They get to have all the questions they want, but if you don't have the answers for it, just say, we got to research it, and we'll get back to them. Because I know this is a concept, and I appreciate, and I'm telling, now I'm speaking to them. I appreciate your exploratory. I don't want you to feel like, gosh, this is a meat grinder because we just don't have, you can say, we don't have the information for that. That doesn't mean you're not doing your job. I mean, we got to research it. And if we don't know what this, how, why the state's making the decisions, the state's making, then just say, we don't know that, and we may not.
I do have, have a question, though, on, on maybe, let's use an example. So say the Rainier School System is hooked up. So is there.
They're already on a big.
They, they have their own, right?
They're already on a big septic system.
And so is this concept, has this been developed where now there's better process that gives you better outcome? So, I mean, we don't know if the Rainier School System is working as good as it could or not. You know, are we talking about duplicating something like that when you're talking about Rainier? Now Rochester, they've got their own system down there as well at the school. So is this a more efficient system that we're thinking about? Maybe getting involved in that allows you to have twice as many hookups and the outflow and nitrate load, all that stuff is handled as good as, as this old system built 50 years ago? I mean, that, you know, so Rainier had their system in 50 years ago. What's going on there? What's going on down in Rochester? The same thing. Are we going to have better systems? And that's where I think you guys are headed to find this stuff out, right?
I think they'd be good folks to talk to.
Yeah, you don't have any way of knowing at this point, but those are all questions I'd like to see answered. You know, so I, I'm very excited. I, I'm kind of like Commissioner Mejia. I'm, I'm not going to dance or anything. She can probably dance. But I think this is, is a good start to solving some community problems. That makes sense if the systems are available. I mean, I'm, I was there for Tonino when they made that big push. And, you know, there was talk about maybe BuCoda could hook on and do that, you know, tight line. And I don't know what was the holdup on that cost or something, was it?
Running pipe?
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I think it's all, all reasonable. But we want, we might want to be realistic on the nitrate loading. And where is the problem? How deep is the well that serves Rainier, you know? Nitrates aren't generally affecting the deep water wells that are 500 feet deep. It might be more of an effect on the drain field or on a drainage that's a mile and a half away, you know, the Schuets River. And the elevation change that gets us there.
Shall we go west?
Well, hold on, Ash. Did it kick us off on Zoom?
Oh, I don't know. It says something about timing out.
Yeah, I'm wondering, as long as the public can, there was no one on Zoom, but as long as the public can see the slides, is my only.
Keep going then.
Okay. West of Rochester, which also has a really neat old historical main street that is limited by these land area requirements, the nitrate loading isn't as much of a concern here, at least currently, but it's always going to be a longer-term concern. And so everything we've talked about as it relates to Rainier, there is also a concept to potentially be developed for Rochester that would help support the local business district there. And then depending on where you locate one of these, could also support the LAMRd. The, oh boy, I was going to spell out that acronym, and now I'm. Commissioner Mensah, you know the acronym.
Local Area of More Intense Residential Development?
Thank you. So the LAMRd right outside of Rochester is actually one of the areas identified for more diverse housing types as we've been going through the comprehensive planning process. But of course, one of the biggest hindrances is any kind of wastewater treatment. So a loss system could be a solution there as well, in addition to the business district. We, we don't necessarily own a centralized parcel in Rochester, but that doesn't mean that there aren't opportunities to. that there aren't opportunities to speak with landowners in that area to see if they'd be interested in some kind of partnership with the county to make something happen.
When you say grant funding for feasibility analysis, you're just saying that's a plan to try to seek grant funding or there's opportunities? I mean, what do you mean by that, that bullet?
It's a great segue and because of the collaborative nature of this project, we have possibly three different grant sources we could pull from, whether that be economic development grants for rural communities, environmental health related grants, or just general like commerce rural community grants. And I'm going to, I'm going to let Season kind of wrap it up on the grant side and what the next steps would be.
Yeah, so we are looking for a direction from the board today to continue to engage our community partners in Rainier and Rochester. We're looking over maybe the next one or two years, working with them to kind of develop a concept moving forward with what they would like to see in their community. We'd like to scope out a feasibility study and then potentially pursue these grant options if the partners would like to, to join us in this effort.
Season, there are grant opportunities that we'd go after, but as of right now, we don't have any grants that we.
Correct.
Thank you for answering.
You were, and I'll get too much for you, but can you repeat the, the grants that you were saying that, that might apply?
So there's Curb, which is. Curb is more in the economic development realm and probably would be enough for feasibility analysis, and that's a rolling grant opportunity. So we can take our time in developing a concept with our community partners and know that a Curb grant would be an option.
And then there's Centennial Grant Funding from the State Department of Health. Or no, it's Department of Ecology, I think it's Ecology, yeah.
EDC has expanded. I don't know if you, you, I don't know, have you ever briefed the board about the expansion on that, Wayne? EDC district that went out here is.
We, we talked about it a little bit, but the.
So that's also an area of, uh, they're looking at this type of thing. Well, I know housing in general needs this to make it happen. And so I hope somebody is trying to get ahead of the curve like you, you folks are, but I think there's grant money out there for this.
Commissioner Fornin?
I just want to thank you guys for bringing this forward. This is one of the most exciting things that I've been, I've heard about in the last year. So I am all thumbs up and if I could take my shoes off and.
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm with you too.
And if any of you would like more information, we're happy to do individual briefings. If you have questions that pop up, please email them to us so that we can research them. This is not the end of a conversation, it's the start of a conversation. Go back one slide, please. What we're looking for is the thumbs up from the board about, do you want staff to continue to go down this path because it will take time and energy? And so I'm asking the board to give us direction at this time.
Yep. As we get a little further, going to steady and talking about.
Do we have six thumbs so far? Do we have a, I mean.
So I saw one, two, three thumbs.
Well, each one of us had two.
Eight thumbs.
Is something cheat, like, I guess I'm curious why this hasn't come up before? I mean, is something, has Ecology or somebody loosened up, that Department of Health loosened up a rule or a regulation that allows people to think about this? I mean, these systems have been around, this problem has been around. Why has nobody really connected these dots before?
Josh, do you want to answer that?
You guys have an answer? Because my answer is, my answer is very simple. You have good staff, everything's coming together at the right time. We've seen that there's been pilot projects that have been successful. It was that putting all those dots together, this is when you talk about.
Just say.
Silos of departments, they broke down the silos and they reached out to the state and they put it all together, so.
My question is state level, though. I'm not talking about why is Thurston County not done this?
Because the state, state is usually reactive to what we're trying to do on the ground. And that we've been asking these questions about economic development, that's a different question that has been asked previous.
We can ask Commissioner why they've recently approved two. We can do some background with the context we have. If we can get an answer, we'll share it with you.
Yeah, I just thought maybe, maybe.
It's a good question.
Maybe there was a policy change at state level that, you know, made it more feasible. I don't know. I mean, it's, it seems, it just seems obvious. I mean, it, it seems kind of obvious in a, in a sense. And if you're, if Growth Management Act is saying, you know, you can't, you've got to use, you know, but then there's these other techniques, maybe it's the modular nature.
Yeah, I was just giving it to you.
Technology, yeah.
That makes it more feasible.
I think it's a new nonstick lining for the, for the, the units or something, I don't know.
I underscored Josh's comment, though. You know, Season, how long have you been in your position?
Seven months.
Did you hear that?
I did.
Seven months. You know, Josh has been working for several years with CPED on a different approach. Folks in their positions, getting settled in, getting able to make progress in understanding process, having conversations, knowing what's available in the county to bring things together. And this is a great example of what we want our organization to do. We have to understand that it takes time to do it because it takes the right leadership to create culture where this type of conversation can take place, where people have the capacity to do that. And so as a team leader, I see this not just as a natural outworking because these are two departments here, right, that have come together. They were sitting at that table, I was watching them, they were talking and laughing and enjoying each other's company. All of that is part of the culture that we want to build and, you know, it doesn't just happen by accident. So thank you so much. Sounds like there's some questions that we can answer and follow up. What our commitment is, since we got eight thumbs up, our commitment is that over the next one to two years, we will bring this back for periodic updates so that you're keeping the prize of what's taking place.
Two weeks.
Well, that timeline is great because what, we're also going to need is.
Not two weeks.
Sorry, no, the two years, one to two years. Because you see that first step is reaching out to local partners. This is also this, this new way of doing business is to ensure that good ideas come to you first.
Yes.
We don't have all of the answers, but we want to make sure that you're at the front end of every good idea and they get that thumbs up. Then we go out into the community because you're going to be out there also. You're talking to the mayor of Rainier and you're down on Rochester. We need you to say, this is a good idea. It's not going to be two weeks. It's going to be one to two years and we need your help and support to go through this process. So knowing that your team is going to be, keep looking around corners, the questions are great, but please don't be frustrated when we don't have all the answers because we want to bring you into the very front end of these concepts and then work through it together to the success down the road.
Yeah, that's the paradigm shift forward is rather than wait for a board item with an agreement with Rainier, maybe one of you may be a part of it, nobody else is, and it's now Friday evening, you're getting the packet for a Tuesday review that nobody has any background and we're scrambling to get a briefing. We're going to start front loading information so that you are first and can weigh in your perspective to the recipe so that we know how to go forward. That's our desire. So thank you, team. You get a round of applause.
Thank you.
You double.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Super.
I'm staying, I'm sorry.
Thank you, boy.
Thank you.
Anyone need a break? Are we good to go? So we, we charge on through 20, Thurston 2045 update. And Ashley, are you ready to charge here?
I am, and hopefully this will be brief. Thank you again for the, for the YouTubers. Ashley Rye, interim CPED director. We committed to providing quarterly updates on the comprehensive plan update process to keep you informed as we go along this journey. I don't have a mouse anymore. Yeah. That way it'll. Thank you so much.
And again, I'm going to jump in real quick. This is another one of those paradigm shifts where instead of being reactive and when the board says, hey, has there been any outreach on the comprehensive plan? We heard that. And so this is us being proactive, as Ashley said, providing quarterly updates. So this too is going to feel a bit new. We might not have all the answers, but this is us ensuring that the elected officials are updated.
Yep, and this is one of those one to two year processes that you probably won't see, you know, any drafts coming your way until spring of next year. Today, we're just going to go over our current status, major themes we've been hearing as we've been out in the community, an update on housing, which you have been more engaged with directly, some information about the environmental review that got kicked off, and then our timeline. So where are we at? Our planning commissioners, if there's, if there's anyone that deserves a round of applause, it's them. They've been putting in regularly three to three and a half hours every other week. They're on, tonight will be work session number 21 for the comprehensive plan. They're also working on other docket items too. But remaining topics through the end of the year, we've got housing. Housing chapter just got released to the public. We've got climate as a chapter, we've already brought the policies forward. We've got transportation coming up and then a new element, the implementation plan. So this is basically taking all the action items from the comprehensive plan and putting them in one place so that we can be held more accountable by our community. Our outreach is ongoing thanks to those who have participated with us and a special shout out to Planning Commissioner Helverson, who's been joining every event down in South County. But we've got, 500 comments have been shared so far. We have attended 39 events. We've held our own listening sessions and community forums and we plan on having two more in the coming months. We're actually going to use the time before our planning commission meetings to have mini open houses, kind of come and ask a question of the staff or a planning commissioner. And then we're going to do additional targeted outreach in the fall and the winter. So what have we heard? And you've probably heard similar things, and if you haven't, please let us know. Housing overwhelmingly, we've heard that folks don't want to see more than 5% of new housing allocated in rural areas. And the difference there is allocated versus built. We have, we have a, a pattern of lot sizes out in the county of five acres unless we're, you know, going to buy up a lot of those lots. They still will exist as additional capacity and we'll get into that a little bit more when we go through housing. But in general, we don't want to allocate more than 5%. And then to also plan for housing near our services and where people work. From a land use perspective, we've heard from the community that they want policies adopted for UGA swaps before considering them, both in the comp plan and the county wide planning policies. And they want to update language for rural industrial designations to align with what we heard from the industrial land study, which you got a briefing on at the end of last year. On the climate side, we've heard overwhelmingly to integrate all the great work that's been done in the climate mitigation plan to support electrical vehicle infrastructure and building retrofits, starting with buildings that the county owns and to consider impacts on wildlife and habitat corridors. There's parallel efforts going on at the state level and in our local community to solidify what those key wildlife habitat corridors are, and they want to make sure that's reflected in the comp plan and in the climate chapter.
When you say wildlife corridors, is that what you said? Wildlife?
Wildlife, habitat corridors.
You know, there's a camera on that freeway up by.
Near Maytown?
Yes, Snocola May, Snocola May Pass.
Oh, that one, yes.
Pass, wildlife corridor thing.
Fun fact, I was the lead community engagement specialist on that project, wildlife crossing.
It's pretty cool. Have you, have you reviewed?
There you go.
Have you reviewed any of those camera footages? Because if we're going to look at a real wildlife corridor, the usage has to come into play. And maybe the animals, see, they don't, the animals don't know the other side of the freeway, really. So they're not using it like they should. And so we need to rethink some of that. Just, I'm just pointing that out. They have a, a live camera up there.
Yeah.
And somebody ought to put, put together some facts sometimes on what's actually going on. Anyway, just to bring that up. You should always deal in the real facts, not the speculation facts.
If you recall, the slide is what we've heard. So this isn't staff generating this. This is your staff listening to the community and bringing this information back to you.
Yeah, and trying to align with other efforts. So there's an effort currently going on. I think Commissioner Mensah is, is familiar with the effort going on by the, the state in looking at potential improvements that could be made really around I-5 that we may or may not be part of, but makes, making sure that we don't have anything in our policy framework that would preclude work that the state might want to do and to the extent that we can support it, support it. So around housing, so this is, this is an area of the comprehensive plan update that you have been engaged in. And we've been working through a regional process with our jurisdictional partners. So new state law requires a coordinated planning effort for housing in the 0 to 120% income brackets. So families or households that fit within those income brackets. They have said not to plan for outside of the 120% income brackets. We've been really focused on the affordable housing that falls within that, that range. Like I said, we engaged in a regional process. TRPC was the organizing entity, but we've been meeting consistently with all of our city partners and doing it in a coordinated effort. So the results and you're, I think, the first, first elected body to, to hear the results because they're hot off the, hot off the printer. Less than 2% of housing in the 0 to 120% income brackets will be allocated to rural areas. And excess capacity will exist, though, going back to, we have a lot of five acre lots. That's just what our county is comprised of. So there will be excess capacity, but it will fall in the 120% income bracket. It's not really affordable to develop a house on five acres these days. Overall, this is a really positive one. The region has capacity to accommodate affordable housing. So even our jurisdictional partners, if you look at their urban areas, the cities plus the UGAs, they have space to accommodate the affordable housing that, that this region needs. That doesn't mean there aren't a lot of other barriers, and that's the difficult part about this process is that, just means that land use and zoning isn't a barrier. There could be a whole host of other barriers, though. So the work isn't done just because we have fixed zoning. There's still a lot of work for our communities to do.
Do you have anything? I see you've got a couple categories, but does, do duplexes fit in anywhere on this housing?
They do. It's really hard to build them in the rural areas unless it's a LAMRd.
And that is that acronym?
Oh, it's the more, more intense residential development.
We have any besides Rochester?
We've got small ones. Most of our LAMRds are legacy lakeside communities, whereas, you know, other, other counties might have LAMRds, you know, spread throughout. If you look at our map, there's some in Green Cove, there's quite a few in Green Cove, and they are subject to additional environmental considerations. And then you have some legacy lakeside communities. Rochester is probably the one that has the most potential.
Yeah, Elm's got something too. Their duplexes used to be the way a family would get a start in the world is somebody, if they had enough to get going and they could build a duplex, usually they'd live in one side and rent out the other side. It's just a good economic development.
So we're looking at expanding the different housing types allowed in LAMRd, so that might be one of them. There will still be restrictions around wastewater treatment, which is why the loss system is so important to kind of figure out the infrastructure to support that kind of development. And so these are ideas straight out of sustainable Thurston relating to that excess housing capacity. So we can allocate only a certain amount of units or housing units being developed in the county, but there will still be additional capacity because we have a lot of five acre parcels. But sustainable Thurston indicated we could expand investments in land conservation, which we do have a grant funded project right now to update all of our land conservation incentive programs. Sustainable Thurston said we could create and prioritize an inventory of farmlands, forestlands, prairies and other critical habitats at risk due to development pressure. We're already doing that as part of the comp plan update, trying to create a baseline inventory for all of these. And then continue watershed based land use planning and focus on areas at risk of deprivation. And I would just point to the one water planning grant we just got. So I think we're, we're making headway on the three items identified in sustainable Thurston in a proactive way rather than just looking at things like down zoning and whatnot. These are more incentive based tools that the county could use. And so environmental review, this is exciting, at least to planners. We're doing a full environmental impact statement for this comprehensive plan update. We haven't done one for a comprehensive plan update since the 90s. That's why it's exciting. And it gives us an opportunity to look into, look into any potential environmental impacts or traffic impacts associated with the growth that this county will be accommodating in the next 20 years. So what does that entail? It entails establishing two different alternatives for growth, reviewing those environmental considerations, providing opportunities for public input. We've already had one with the scoping of what our environmental impact statement will be. And then providing you all, in addition to our planning commissioners, with information to take, to, yeah, information to consider when you're looking at the comprehensive plan update. So topics to be studied, this is a reflection on what will. This is a reflection on what will, what we've heard from the community, as well as what we've worked with our consultant team to look at as part of that environmental review. So we've got natural systems, especially surfacing groundwater resources, land use patterns and policies, housing and socioeconomics, transportation, public services, and utilities. One thing that isn't reflected here is that we are going to pay particular attention to impacts of wildlife and habitat as reflected in our habitat conservation plan. And that was in response to feedback from the community. So next steps, we're like three boxes in, which is, which is exciting to me. So we're in planning commission review. It's going to be in planning commission for a while. They still have a lot of work to do. And we want to give the planning commission and the community time over the holiday break to sit down and read through the whole comp plan draft. And so we'll be hopefully having that draft released by the end of November, allowing for two months of time for people to really digest what's in there and holding a public hearing in January when everyone's kind of back for the new year. I, I imagine after that public hearing, the planning commission is going to want to sit with, sit with the comp plan update for at least another few work sessions before it comes to the board in March or April of, April of next year.
Just in terms of the timeline, I want us to be mindful of like holidays and people being out. That if it is to be in January, that it's later in January. That way, people really have an opportunity and not have people out of town and then come in and realize that they're an opportunity to provide comment. I know probably there's going to be a lot of organizations too and groups, community groups that submit public comment for this, have been tracking this very closely. And so I just want to be mindful of the timeline that we set a public hearing, that it's truly accessible for everyone who really wants to do it.
Yeah, we're exploring actually having a Saturday public hearing. The planning commission is open to it. And so that, you know, folks who might not be available on an evening would be able to come out and then just looking for maybe even general time slots related to some of the hotter topics. So someone doesn't have to sit there all day if they want to comment on transportation. But most of the, most of the comments will be on housing or climate. We've also, we've gotten really, really good engagement at our planning commission meetings. We've been releasing the chapters at least, or to the extent that we can, two weeks ahead of our planning commission meetings. We've been meeting with our tribal partners at least once a month, if not more, to go over the draft chapters and incorporate changes or feedback and sharing that with the planning commission. So it's been a really great iterative process. So I'm excited to see what the final draft or the planning commission draft ends up looking like.
Just real quick clarification, the January, late January, public hearing is for the planning commission?
Planning commission, yeah. And there'll be a separate, separate public hearing with the board. And then these are the ways to engage. And it's been a great use of our new engagement tool, Survey Monkey. You can go on and see all of the comments live. And so there's full transparency. You submit a comment, you can see it posted. You can also go back and see, you know, all the other comments that have been submitted on the same topic area.
That's feedback we receive from the community is make it more accessible, make it more transparent. So I would say, just going all the way back to the beginning of this presentation, that slide three where we talk about all the engagement that's happening, the nearly 500 comments, 39 events, four listening events that we put together. You all also being at those events is key. So when you see those invitations come through from CPED and the team, thank you for your response. And if there's places where you think we need to be, whether it's a CLO event or another event, let us know. We want to be where the community is. That's what has made this outreach so successful thus far, and that continued engagement is going to be important. So we look to you to help us as well.
I, I brought this up at the beginning of this process about the salmon recovery plans. And I'll just continue to report that that conversation continues to be discussed at the salmon recovery council. I just sat in on a subcommittee meeting where we spent two hours brainstorming how to make stronger the sections of our salmon recovery plan addendum that relate to land use. And again, I was just double checking my notes. There was discussion about asking local jurisdictions to adopt salmon recovery plans and to require consultation with, in the process with watershed leads, the lead entity coordinators, so that we know when we're making these different, you know, high level policies, that we know where the critical salmon habitat areas are. And we're not working at cross purposes with our salmon recovery plan. So that's going to be something that we're going to probably bring to the legislature, but it might miss this cycle, but doesn't mean we can't do it or shouldn't do it just because we're not required to do it. Because obviously it's, there's nothing more frustrating to me. And like, I go to one meeting and we're talking about doing this. And I go to another meeting, we're talking about doing something exactly the opposite. And it's these types of efforts that, you know, synthesize things in a way that hopefully can make it work better.
That, that sounds great. We actually set aside time because water policies, they get sprinkled, no pun intended, throughout the whole comp plan. And so we actually reserved time with the planning commission to just talk about the water policies. And we pulled them from all the different sections so they could take a comprehensive look at, you know, all of the updates that we're looking to make in response to what's in the watershed plans, salmon recovery plans, League of Women Voters water study that I know probably was shared with the commission a few years back. So yeah, I think that's a really good point. And we can do the same thing for, for the board. We could really highlight sort of the, those water pieces as a standalone item because they are hard to track if you're looking at all the chapters individually.
Other questions for Ashley?
No, just thank you and great job. I have seen you out in the community. And I think this is a very exciting time. And I've watched a couple of planning commission meetings where as they're trying to, you know, it's like, okay, we have to, you know, like make space because we have, you know. And so I know that our planning commission is fully engaged on this as well. So just thank you for all of the hard work that's gone into this and the outreach of it and the planning of it.
Josh, when you were, I feel like when we discussed the, you know, like the dinner with the planning commission, I feel like you weren't there.
We, we've talked, we're rounding up with Ashley.
I was just trying to remember, like, didn't we do that in the summer a lot of times? I feel like we did.
It's bounced around.
Okay.
Yeah, there hasn't been a lot of consistency, staff said. And I think there was a time when we didn't do it, but we did it last year. So we're working to get that together.
All this work they're doing, I want to keep them encouraged and engaged with us, you know, so they feel... They made it very clear how important it was to feel engaged with the work. Okay?
I do entice them with cookies.
Cookies, no, there's no substitute for a meaningful conversation with a county commissioner.
It's a good way to kick it off, though.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up, is that it?
That's it.
That's it, all right.
I'm going to stick.
Are we doing the quarterly like this every quarter or just the email? What, what's your suggestion?
So there's the, the docket update, there's, and then there's the comprehensive plan update. And it's really up to the board whether you'd like us to return with a briefing for the comprehensive plan update or whether you would just prefer an email.
Do you like this format? Do you like email this, making sure that you're engaged on the comprehensive plan so you're not caught off guard? Does this work for you?
Well, if you can come up with something like you came up with about septic systems and working on that, we'll have it every other day.
Okay, we'll keep you informed.
We'll do an email job.
I'm good with, I mean, you know.
Email sounds great.
And then anytime you guys want this to come back.
Perfect.
Happy to have you.
Come on up, Thomasina.
2024 Thurston County Fair overview is next. Wear my fair shirt for you.
You don't want to look very nice. My shirt looks very nice. If you don't mind controlling that. Assistant County Manager Cummings. Commissioners, your Assistant County, Assistant County Manager Cummings is handing out a document you've already received in your packet, but this is a more nifty format for it. A nice, a nice takeaway, yes, yes. Hello, Commissioners and County Leaders. I'm Thomasina Cooper, your Community Planning Economic Development Fair and Event Center Manager. Happy to be here today. Excited to share more about our Thurston County Fair, some of the highlights, the overview, the excitement and successes. It's always a good day to talk about fair. So go ahead and kick it off. Thank you very much, Ashley. The fair this year was a great success. And that is with a good heartfelt thanks to our Commissioners and our County Leaders for their support of this event. It certainly would not happen without your support. I wanted to highlight first our, our fabulous pancake breakfast. It was a good breakfast, y'all. I've been to these a number of times. You had lots and lots of folks right out the gate. In fact, I think you might be outgrowing the space that you're in, and we might need to consider what that looks like. That's a good problem to have. So you had a record number of volunteers. And like I said, you had so many folks coming in so quick, we needed to pull more tables. That was quite the, quite the surprise start to the day. So our, you know, it takes many hands to put on our fair. You have a great fair board, advisory board, very engaged volunteers, as well as staff who worked very hard to make this a success.
And I just, just really quickly, I, I really want to give a shout out to our aides because without their planning, this wouldn't be possible. And I, they did such a fantastic, they do a fantastic job every year and just really want to acknowledge their work for this because they are the ones who plan, go get the supplies, set up, clean up. They do everything. And, you know, for us, we're, we're lucky to show up and have everything ready to go. And we, they tell us where to go. So just a huge shout out to them.
Thank you, Commissioner. That is a very, very well deserved acknowledgement. That's a hard job to pull that event together, so. So our fair and fairs as a whole are considered the world's largest classroom because there's so much experiential learning. And that is a really, really neat thing. This year, our fair, you know, we've, we, we have heard Assistant County Manager refer to this fair as a gold, or this event as a Goldilocks event on more than one occasion. Has to be just right, not too hot, not too cold, not smoky, not rainy. And all the factors have to align. We were pretty lucky this year. We had good weather. It was humid, which is not always something we thrive in here in the Northwest, but we persevered. We did have some competing events happening at the same time, including Grace Harbor Fair, which is a big draw for our community, as well as Seafair and a number of other local things happening. So in order to help combat that and try and really make sure we were present in the community, we really doubled down on our social media in about six weeks leading up to the fair, to the extent where we had a 1,400% increase in our social media presence, which is a pretty significant jump. We also really pursued some new publicity opportunities, including the big, huge billboard that's out on Yelm Highway at the roundabout, the Redwind Casino billboard. I think it's 65 feet long and 18 feet tall. Thanks, a big heartfelt thanks to Megan's team for helping us design the ad that went up there. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers of how many people see that sign, but I imagine it was quite a few across the busy road. So at this year's fair, we saw about 19,000 attendees. And because of our partnership with the Olympia and Beyond Visitors Bureau, we were able to put a geofence in place and get the information that we had 1,215 people attend who live 50 plus miles away. This is of good baseline information and will help us inform our applications for tourism funding opportunities. We have Wednesday and Saturday, as you can see on the graph, are our largest days, about 4,500 people each of those days. And one of the neat things on Wednesday is One Buck Wednesday is also a fundraiser and supporter, supporting an event for the Thurston County Food Bank. Over 5,200 pounds of food were donated that day. So you get in for a buck and a can of food, it's the best deal in town. We also had some really important VIP folks in, in joining us, including yourselves, of course. We had Representative Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland from Congressional District 10 join us to do her tour of the Agriplex facility, future home of the Agriplex, as well as enjoy the fair. She got a kick out of the goats and the sheep, and she loved the cutouts where you put your face in the picture.
Was she there?
She was there on Thursday.
See, now the highest attended events are where they're Commissioner related. Make a note of that.
Now somehow, I don't know, I thought I had included.
Congresswoman doesn't quite cut it. I don't want to see their commission.
I had thought I had included pictures from the opening ceremonies, a heartfelt thanks to those, those of you who participated. I know we have some, some folks in the room who took a ribbon home with them.
Second place.
For their, their big win, yes, yes. All right, so our exhibits.
Don't complain about those, those competitions.
Sheriff got some creative judgings, so. There's a dispute about whether Sheriff truly would own the person.
Oh goodness, well, it's all in good fun. So our exhibits went very well this year. We, we had a total of 3,038 exhibits at the fair. And that ranges from plants and collections and photos and geese and sheep and cows and the whole nine yards. We did see a significant increase in our Still Life exhibits, 49%, which to me indicates that people are, A, learning more about the fair and, and participating, and B, that there are more hobbyists out there. And I think that's a result of COVID. We did see a small decrease in our animal entries, a 3% decrease. However, we had the most sheep we have ever had, so that was pretty fun. Thankfully, we had enough panels and everybody was safe and happy. Thinking of animals, our good partners, the Youth Market Animal Sale, did have a successful auction. Our very own Todd Mason from Public Works was one of the auctioneers. If you ever get a chance to see Todd in action, I highly recommend it. The auction did net about $215,000. This year, they included turkeys for the first time. So people were thinking about Thanksgiving dinner, and those went like gangbusters. And also for the first time this year, we offered online, online, excuse me, onsite mobile processing for our birds. So people did not have to have a processor come in to pick up the birds and then take them elsewhere. That processor came to us. And so on Monday, they took care of that, nice and neat, all permitted as needed, of course. We also, and I want to point out, the picture in the top left is photo of volunteers who are thanking our bidders for the market sale and making sure that they feel appreciated. This is also one of the first times they've added that component, so. So we've looked at, thank you very much. So now we start thinking about Fair 2025. And, and to look forward, we're looking back. We have our first fair board meeting this evening since the fair. We have been gathering feedback from a survey that's been out in the field since, since the fair itself. We've gotten responses from exhibitors, vendors, entertainers, participants. We've also been surveying the fair board as well for their thoughts on what we can do, what we're doing well, what we could do better, what we want to change in the future. We will be doing a, we're hoping to host a fair board retreat sometime in the month of October. If it's not the first time this has been done, it is the first time in a very long time that the fair board has, has sat down and retreat. I want us to do a SWOT analysis with a real positive spin. We all know that there's many opportunities at the fair grounds and the fair itself. So how are we going to focus in on what, how we want to maximize those opportunities? I'm also working on a communications plan for our fair and our fairgrounds. I'm working with Megan and her team, and we'll make sure that that's a multi-channel, multi-pronged plan that goes throughout the year that highlights not just our rentals, but our fair itself. I have some creative ideas I want us to put into play to really lift that visibility. One of the ways we're going to fund that is through, hopefully, is through lodging tax advisory committee dollars. And I'm in the process of applying. I've applied for LACI. I have Olympia coming up. Thurston County will be up as well soon, in addition to recently applying for a heritage grant. Now, I did skip one point in this, and that is our fair entry system. So we can't do any of the 3,000 forms right now without having to touch paper. So if somebody enters, enters into the fair, somebody judges an item at the fair, all of this is hard, hard paper. We have got people, we're paying staff to enter that information into a computer. The system from 1990 something served us well in 1990 something. It's not serving us well now. And so one of our priorities this year, because it's the backbone of our, of our whole administrative system out there at the fair, is to implement a new system, a new fair management system that will allow for people to put in all of their forms online. We're not reading people's handwriting. Judges to be able to put their judging information in online, which will allow us to process our premiums and get those checks out to winners sooner. So this is something that you'll certainly be hearing more from me about. I'm working with fair board members right now on analysis of different systems and what I think will be the best, what we think will be the best suited. So that's something that, while it's not exciting and flashy, oh, it's going to be a good addition to our program.
Is Grace Harbor doing that currently? Any chance?
I'm sorry.
Is Grace Harbor doing that currently?
You know, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to connect with our Grace Harbor folks quite yet. But I look forward to doing so at our convention at the end of October. That's one of the questions. That's one of the questions I have from many of our partners is who's using what systems and how are they working for them? Want to make sure that we're working as efficiently as possible.
When you say the third bullet, they're developing communication plan for grounds, an event, a fair event?
A fair event.
And what I'm curious about, I know you, when you took the job, I mean, when you started, you're like, the fair was in, you know, mid-preparation, and you haven't probably even had a chance to, to think, but I'm just curious, kind of what, what do you see is coming up for like the off-season, you know, the, the efforts to increase off-season, you know, visibility or event? Like, what does that look like to you? Like, I mean, what, what things are you thinking that are either your sort of first steps in enhancing the, the commercial, you know?
Absolutely.
Prospects of the fairgrounds when it's not fair season?
Absolutely. So there are a number of low-hanging fruits, if you will, that we can easily pluck. Before we do that, though, we need analysis under our belts. So right now, I'm partnering with Stacy in the Community Planning Department, as well as with our friends at Experience Olympia and Beyond, to do that analysis on what our current usage is, what our current rates are, how does that compare to other people, where are those gaps and opportunity? That analysis will let us, will then inform how we're moving forward with where we're advertising, to whom we're advertising. I've been reviewing our 2023 contracts over the past few days to get a sense of what spaces are being used by how oft, how often and by whom. We have a number of state entities that use our, our spaces, as well as a surprising number of private birthday parties. I'm amazed at this. Anyway, so, so how are we tapping into those markets? Are we, are, are costs where they are, rental rates where they should be? And I don't know that they are. I want to make sure that we're advertising and we're getting the word out with our nonprofit partners because our spaces are perfect for nonprofit events. Want to make sure that we're working with our EDC partners, our Chamber partners, to get, make sure that private businesses know that our spaces are out there, because I think that there's a number of events that happen in the community that people just don't know that we have space available. So simply making sure we're present in their minds, making sure that we're maximizing social media, online media. That's really the, I'm guessing that that's what our analysis will tell us that we really need to focus in on. Also, I really want a big digital sign outside. Because if we can advertise that things are happening at that space with sixteen thousand people who drive by every day on Carpenter Road, that just makes sense. So.
Do you have one more slide?
Nope, no, I think that's it. I was just, I have all these events that I, you have already like, you know, just told Thomasina that I would love and pitching to her, and I'm really, how was the Beer Garden this year?
The Beer Garden went really well. I love that we have the Sanino Eagles hosting it. I think they did a great job. I am, I'm, I'm considering, although I haven't spoken to the fair board about this quite yet, considering how we lay out our fairgrounds, the activities, what happens where, and if that's the right spot for that particular activity.
How was the new stage that you?
Oh, the new stage is great.
Letting get to see the entertainment on that new stage in the back of the fair.
So our secondary stage over by the food court is brand new. It was purchased by the Fair Foundation last year with a grant from the Washington State Department of Agriculture. It is like state of the art. It's fancy. It's great. We've got, we've, we've removed the mobile home trailer that it was previously built upon and actually put in a proper stage. We have Professor Bamboozle, who runs the production side, as well as providing some entertainment on that stage. He was happy as a clam with how everything was set up and, and how the sound worked and, you know, just, just the general, the general new item. And I think we've also, because we've also slightly angled that stage, you can sit in that beer garden or in the heritage green and be able to see what's happening on the stage in a way that you weren't able to.
Yeah, that's why I was, when she asked about beer garden, I didn't think of that.
On the stage, yeah, it's.
Because it's, now it was shifted to where it was hitting the beer garden better, probably the better synergy overall. Commissioner Edwards, sorry.
Have you made any headway or have you talked to anybody about when we implement this new heads and beds business? Maybe fair gets half or something. We just touched on that.
I believe I have had conversations with each of the Commissioners individually, as well as County Manager, about the potential of the Commission designating an additional two percent LTA to the fairgrounds. I can provide some backup and or some, some detail about how their jurisdictions have done that here locally. I don't have that here in my phone.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wonder, is there still something percolating?
Still percolating.
I think you've got a pretty good, I think you've got a board that's pretty supportive of the fair.
Very lucky.
Hoping maybe we can capitalize on that. Maybe not the whole thing, but you know, a piece of it. With that way, we'd know a certain amount that we'd have each year.
It's nice to have a designated funding stream that's not from general.
When you get in the spotlight, these photos are just gorgeous. I know it was Megan's team that was out there, and, you know, even, every little bit helps to try to highlight how great our fair is.
The fair videos were great. And seeing all the setup that went on with the drone, that was really fun. Yeah, and that was, I thought, just really cool to just see how it all kind of plays out. And so I'm excited for what's to come next year.
What's coming? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For all your.
Of course.
It's a fun job.
Anything else for the Thomasina? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Items?
I just have one really quick one. That's okay, Chair?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Okay, so just wanted to let everyone know that WASAC does have a couple of committees open, boards and commissions. And so there's the Maritime Washington Advisory Board, the Missing and Murdered.
I think Commissioner Fornier is very interested in maritime issues.
Okay. Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Persons Task Force. I will be submitting an application for that one. Snowmobile Advisory Committee and Winter Recreation Advisory Committee. So if anyone applies to them, just let me know, since these go through WASAC Board of Directors.
Commissioner Klaus, Snowmobile Advisory Committee?
Yeah, that sounds fun.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mahia. There's always opportunities for engagement with WASAC. Once my septic duties are over, I'll consider. Any other Commissioner Items?
You know, maybe just one quick thing. We've had an ongoing problem out on 148 with a, I'm going to say it's a rat's nest operation out there, real problems for the community. Now, here in the last few days, there was a shooting out there, some real serious community concerns. It just seems like these problems are escalating, I guess, more as.
From a particular property?
Yeah, it's, it's a property that SEEPED has been trying to fix for quite a while, you know, last couple of years, I think. And makes it kind of bad to, you know, when we visit the property. And people are pretty nervous, you know, should we have, always have a policeman go out there with them, that kind of thing. Anyway, just.
Like drug activity and stuff?
Yeah, oh, yeah. A lot of drug activity, derelicts hanging out there, just, just a bad scenario. Kind of like what's, you know, there's, at the end of Moon Road, there's one. I mean, we've got them all around. And that was another bad one that developed. Anyway, I just.
Maybe getting an update from the County Manager, from Ashley, and kind of seeing what's been done and kind of the.
I mean, I think we're making headway. I just bring it. I don't know how many of you've heard about it, you know?
So I appreciate the acknowledgement of that case. SEEPED is narrow, focused on land use. Environmental health is focused on the sanitation, and then you have public safety with the Sheriff's Office. And so you're right, it is, when our team goes out to places like that, it is a concern for their safety. But we have been doing everything we can within the land use portfolio.
What is the land? I mean, what, what is the?
So they have violations that we can get more information on that.
You know, they got motor homes moved in there, no septic.
What's the property you said?
Oh, that particular one was out at the end of 148. But we've got plenty of them around. I just make mention of that because we had a serious incident. We've got that one on Mills, Union Mills Road.
You for a testimony on that?
Kind of the same kind of a thing.
I mean.
Yeah, that's the one we followed up on.
Yeah, I mean, there's, they're working on it. It's just, gosh, they're, they're just starting to get out of hand, seems like.
And the land use compliance isn't a silver bullet. Like, we don't have any authority on public safety or drug laws or any of that. So it is, it is a difficult process.
Yeah. It's a problem. One of the many problems we've got.
Chair, I have one item. Rick, can you mind joining the table with us? So as you are all aware, we own property on Carpenter Road. Rick's going to pass out a quick, give a map, pass out. And we had a discussion at one of our check-ins about looking at that property, but we realized we'd never received board direction. So we won't go any further, since there had been some community concerns from some of the business owners that I believe they reached out to Commissioner Fornier about. Staff had engaged with, what's the name of the company?
Espanza.
Espanza.
They have a new name, New Horizons.
New Horizons.
Sorry. We had reached out to them to, to start a conversation about could something happen on the property we own on Carpenter. And the commission conversation, although we didn't receive direction, was make sure Lacey, City of Lacey was good with it. So we initiated a conversation with the city manager to schedule time with city council members to look at the developments that New Horizons has done outside of county, in county, and then visit the site. Well, that, that meeting hasn't been able to get scheduled because of some schedule conflicts. But when folks from New Horizons, the county staff went out to look at the property, property owners saw county staff out there. They were a bit concerned as to what would take place, not wanting a certain type of development to take place there.
What property?
Some of the business property owners, I don't know specifically which ones, I think three folks reached out to Commissioner Fornier.
There's, there's a cigar store there, there's a car lot there, and there's something else that they're concerned.
Right. So, and he brought it up at the meeting last time. I believe he asked the question. We gave a response that it was, we're kind of in exploratory phase. So just bringing this back to get board direction on, do you want us to continue to look at this site with New Horizons as a potential site for a development there? And that would also continue working with the City of Lacey in those conversations.
I bring up the history of the, so the history of the Tumwater Project, which was predated my being on the board, but I was aware of it, and I met with a lot of people involved in it in the area. And my understanding from that is, because it's kind of an industrial area, you know, near Mottman area, and when, when it was first proposed, there was opposition from all the surrounding businesses. And it went forward. And then, over time, it was so well-run that they actually appreciated the fact that it was like, it was good supervision for their areas. Because now there was, because there was, in case there were actual people that did want to create damage, there was somebody to see it and report it, and a couple instances of that happened. And now it's like a trusted partner. And that's what I heard from different parties. Again, every project can be different, but the way these are set up, I just think alleviates so many of those fears that people have. So, you know, I'm, I'm still, I'm personally still interested in seeing what the opportunities are and what City of Lacey might have to say about it.
I think we should have this conversation when Commissioner Fornier is here because he had, I think where he's coming from is, and I, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to speak for him, but just the comments he's relayed to me has been in terms of, as we are thinking about a long-term courthouse, is it, are we in a position to be doing projects like this? Or should we consider selling this property and getting whatever money we have, right, and, and trying to alleviate the expense from, from that courthouse project? And so I just think that for him to be able to kind of relay where he's at, I.
I have no problem bringing this back next week. I'll just let Commissioners know. We're going to pause on any additional work until we get direction, but if that's a desire of the Commissioners, I have no problem bringing this back next week.
And I really think Lacey needs to be, at least, you know, if the meetings haven't happened, somewhere along the line, we need to.
Yeah, we've had discussions with the city manager. He would like to meet with a couple council members. Getting that scheduled has taken quite a bit of time. We had something on calendar, but, you know, schedules be what they were. That got pushed. Before we initiate more scheduling, just wanted to make sure I had direction from the board.
I'm not saying that's kind of where I'm at, right? I was just trying to kind of, and I think just hearing all the perspectives and.
Sure, happy to bring this back next week.
I'm kind of with Commissioner Mahia.
Nothing else?
Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned.